Being is being held in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts March twelfth order suspending certain provisions of the Oregon meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. Public attendance will be permitted in person. Public can access the meeting via WebEx technology. Till further notice, the Burlington School Committee will hear public comment virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Broadway. Usual. So, competing and the telephone number for the meeting is four oh eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. And that's four oh eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. The meeting number or access code is one two nine, four four three, eight eight zero zero. And the access code is one two nine, four four three, eight eight zero zero. The meeting password is Tuesday. So with that, if I could ask everyone to stand for the pleasure audience.
Into the black, United States of America. Public vote stands. God will defend the best of all.
So now, along to the school committee reorganization. And it's the, it's the first meeting after town elections, school committee should first address its organization for coming here. Leading the election of a chairman, vice chairman. Representatives of the committee serve as liaison members for the following committee organizations. Assignments are listed below. So the first thing we should do is could I have a nomination for school committee chair?
I can nominate Thomas Murphy, school chair, seconded.
Who gets seconded? Is there any discussion? Do you none? All those in favor?
Well, Paul or not.
As the chair bowls are. So, six, zero, or zero. With that, Mr. Murphy, the gavel is yours. It's not, I, I just like the mileage.
Yeah, I'd like to also say that I, you know, I appreciate the work that the committee was involved with. How I, it's, I, I, I feel a little sad because you're the one who kept the question goes to get back to the person meetings and you're no longer the chair now that we got back in person, but um, thank you very much because I know it was hard uh, this year. In addition.
That's strictly a coincidence, but.
Yes. There you go. And I'm happy to ask the gavel for this to Murphy. He did a great job.
I'd also like to congratulate Martha on the reelection. I'm gonna have a kill campaign, but congratulations.
Thank you very much. I, I have uh, pens for anyone who wants one.
And uh, generally impressed the board across the town with the regulations for the candidates who were successful in their elections and for those who weren't successful, congratulations for doing it. More people will be wanting to get votes. Anyway, dressed up now is the uh, the annual uh, reorganization with our various community assignments. A whole bunch of them, typically what we do is if anybody has any issue or want to do, or something that they're currently not doing, but they pick out and make those adjustments. I'll be to, while he's voting through the whole. Currently in front of us is the, the current committee assignments, or subcommittee assignments. And um, I don't know, I don't need to talk to anybody to see if anybody wanted to change out of anything.
So I have a couple of uh, questions and uh, first of all, um, the beeline advisory, it says it's not needed and I, it doesn't exist anymore, so I was thinking we should just not even list it. So that's a suggestion. I don't know if we have to make motions for this or not, but okay. Um, we also um, have the master plan steering committee, which is no longer in existence, so we can cross that one off. I think at some point there may be a master plan implementation committee, but we can steal that when the time comes. So I don't think we need that. Find that there's a purpose for a school committee subcommittee on equity, then we could reinstate it. But at this point, it feels like it's not um, a valuable tool for us to use. So um, the first two, I think there were any questions, but I don't know if people wanna make a comment on that, or if we just would agree that we'll I don't know what the right legal word is, but close that subcommittee for now.
Sure, um, anybody have any input on that? Who wants to share?
Um, I think Eric was talking about I, I was thinking if there was gonna be a uh, community mini, then we would have a school committee representation on the committee. But it may be premature, as Ms. Simon had said.
Okay.
And so um, I'm, I'm not even sure we need to suspend or just not nominate anyone, but you don't wanna be a subcommittee to participate in, so, so I think um, once we start making more progress in that area and if the community establishes a uh, sort of an inter federal government schools type of committee, I think that would be great. Such a thought.
Yes. So I, I would like to suggest that we strike it from the list and then at the point where we understand what the purpose of it would be, we could reinstate it.
Fine, that's great.
And I do have a couple other questions. So, another question I have is maybe something we don't need to talk about tonight, but you know, I've been looking, reviewing this list every year since I've been on the committee and there, it's now not clear to me what they all are. So, like number, some of them are listed as a subcommittee. Subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen, subcommittee to the Ways and Means, subcommittee to the Board of Health, et cetera. And by being a subcommittee, it has certain legal responsibilities about posting and public meetings. But we have other things such as Recreation Commission, such as Legislative Contact Person, such as Audit Subcommittee, which has one, you know, well, that one says Subcommittee. Um, I'm representing, I'm a liaison to the Burlington Youth and Family Services. So, I, this list to me is not clear. What is a liaison? What is a subcommittee? Which ones are which? And what are the legal uh, responsibilities of each category? So I don't think we need to do it though, but I wanna raise that issue and perhaps revisit this in a month? If, if we can think about it, um, I mean, just briefly, if, if it doesn't say Subcommittee, does that mean it's a liaison? Does, does anyone know the answer to that?
Ms. Simon, I'm sorry, but we can, we can double check that. I think the subcommittees might be um, requested or, or designed by the school committee. And um, liaison may actually be a request by the other board for school committee representation. So we wouldn't tell them, they need a subcommittee, they might say we like a liaison, so we would sort of follow their lead. So, I think that might be one of the distinctions. I think the subcommittees were all generated from this, um, from this committee. But uh, we, we can uh, at our future meeting, Sharon, we can put sort of the legal definition of what a subcommittee is. And maybe that distinction for you, that might be a good time to uh, to.
And, and for example, Mr. Murphy has been on this list for the Recreation Commission and I, I used to think, well, was he also on the Recreation Commission? Are you a member of the Recreation Commission?
Uh, yeah.
And so how, what is, how does that, you know, we don't have to get into all the details, Miss Bond was.
Well, the, the, the subcommittees, in my understanding, and there's a couple of exceptions apparently, but most of them uh, related to existing.
Or.
Um, and on occasion, some more than others, it's necessary for us to meet with them to discuss whatever the issue of the day might be. So by having a subcommittee, they then empowered to go to, for instance, a Board of Health meeting, if there's something on a Board of Health agenda that's school-related and they want somebody there. Um, I think we probably, out of habit more than anything else, appointed a subcommittee to the Recreation Commission, even though we have a member of our committee that's the designated member of the Recreation Commission.
So you're not a liaison to the Recreation Commission? You're a member?
There, there's a, um, the planning board and the, and the school committee each have one designated person that becomes a member of the Recreation Commission. So they have three elected members and two appointed members.
Oh, okay.
So we also have apparently a subcommittee to consult with the members.
Yes, there's also a subcommittee.
Which results in me sub, uh, uh, meeting with myself on occasion to, to discuss.
And then every time you go to a meeting, it has to be posted because you're, you're a quorum of a subcommittee.
No, because, well, if, if both members of the subcommittee were gonna attend to an event, then I think the rule is that it would have to be posted. My, my going to a Recreation Committee meeting, I'm the, I'm a member of the Recreation Committee, so.
Right, so that would, that would, you're posted, it's posted as a recreation. So I'd like us to get some clarification.
Yeah, it, it probably, I mean, these are things that I, as long as I've been doing it, that's the same list has been registered for, going on a hundred years, so.
And we may wanna continue doing it the way, that way, but I just would like to understand the process better.
Makes sense.
Okay, so um, and I also, so other than deleting those three that I mentioned, um, I'm happy to stay on the committees I'm on now, um, but if other people are interested in other ones, I'd be interested in hearing about that.
Anybody interested in changing anything, or interested in moving to something different? No? Okay, alright. I will read through the list just for the record then to see who's gonna be on the various subcommittees. Uh, and then at the end, we can just vote ones to, to re, to reappoint.
Okay.
So for the Recreation Commission, I'm the designated school committee member of the Recreation Commission. We have two members serve on the Academic Review Board, uh, that currently is Martha and myself. Two members to s- serve on the sick leave bank committee of the Burlington Education Association. That's the superintendent and one member of the school committee, so currently that's the superintendent and Christine.
Yes.
One member to serve on the sick leave bank committee of the Burlington School Administrators, that's Martha. Legislative contact person to the Mass Association of School Committees, that's Carl and Catherine. Um, chapter seventy seven sixty-six Parent Advisory Committee, that's Christine and Catherine. We're gonna omit the beeline advisory board, as no longer being required. Uh, we've got a subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen, that's currently Christine and myself. Subcommittee to the Ways and Means is Christine and myself. Subcommittee to the Board of Health is Carl and Martha. Subcommittee to the Recreation Committee is Catherine and myself. Subcommittee to the Planning Board is Carl and myself. Subcommittee for Wellness is Martha and Christine, and the alternate is the superintendent. Subcommittee for Transportation is Catherine and Christine, with the superintendent as the alternate. The Audit Subcommittee is me. Uh, we assign representatives to the various PTOs across the board. For Fox Hill, it's Catherine and Christine is the alternate. Memorial School, it's Carl with Martha the alternate. Pine Glen is myself with Christine as an alternate. Francis Wyman is Christine, and I'm the alternate. Marshall Simons is Martha, and Catherine is the alternate. The High School is Carl with Christine as the alternate, and the BECC is Christine. The Burlington Youth and Family Services um, liaison is Martha. We're omitting the Master Plan Steering Committee. Uh, Disability Access Commission is Martha and Christine, and we're omitting the Equity Committee. So, if there are any questions or comments, let me know.
I actually have two more questions, if I could. Um, I had overlooked, um, the chapter seven sixty-six Parent Advisory Committee, the, chapter seven sixty-six hasn't been used in twenty years. And I was wondering if we could rename that committee to be the, a, a, again, I, it's the liaison to, I assume. So the liaison to the Burlington CPAC or Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. So I'd like to propose that we rename that, uh, to name it what the committee is calling itself.
Sure.
Do we need to, you know, just put it in before we vote on it?
Uh, well, I think you just did.
Okay.
And then we'll, um, we can arrange the records later on.
Thank you. So that would say Burlington CPAC, because you don't need to re, the PAC part is the Parent Advisory Committee.
Right.
Or, it could be written out, either one. And my other question is, after we have a conversation about this, am I correct that we could reorganize again? Uh, we don't have to keep them the way they are now, we could decide that Ms. Bond wanted to be on one of my committees and I wanted to be on some other, okay.
This is always a fluid thing. I mean, at some point, we, depending on how things go, we might have another building committee to appoint, so there's always things that kind of kinda go.
Good, thank you. Those are my questions.
Alright, so, if there's nothing further, I'm gonna put the uh, two thousand twenty to twenty-one um, subcommittee and liaison assignments to a vote, as previously read. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Um, that passes five zero zero. Now, we have a few other appointments um, that have to be made individually. Uh, the first one is the school committee designate to the lab collaborative, and historically, that's been the superintendent.
I move we approve uh, the Lab Collaborative School Committee Designee to be Dr. Conti.
I second that.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved five zero zero. Second one is the Central Office Sexual Harassment Complaint Management Facilitators. And uh, that has historically been the Human Resource Director and the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Larkin.
I move that we appoint Mr. Larkin and Joanne Faust, the Human Resources person, as the Central Office Sexual Harassment Complaint Management Facilitators.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also passes five zero zero. The third position is the Coordinator for Non-Discrimination Compliance, including Civil Rights and Title Nine. And that's uh, currently the Human Resource Director and the Assistant Superintendent, Arthur.
I move that we appoint the Human Resource Director, Joanne Faust, and Patrick Larkin as the Coordinators for Non-Discrimination Compliance, including Civil Rights and Title Nine.
I'll second it.
And I have a question on that.
Sure.
It was my understanding that the Special Education Director was perhaps one of these coordinators. Dr. Conti, do you have any memory of that being true in the past, or did I remember it wrong?
Um, it might have been that way in the past.
But, um.
It was before we had um, Joanne Faust.
Ah. Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, seeing nothing further, all in favor of that appointment, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero zero. The fourth appointment is the School Committee Secretary, Sharon Gilbert.
I move we appoint Sharon Gilbert the School Committee Secretary for a term of twenty years.
And Sarah for a twenty.
You need to do another twenty.
Except for the twenty year part, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second and appoint Sharon as the School Committee Secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also passes. Alright, moving along, approval of the minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, that is March twenty-third.
March twenty-third, yeah.
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry.
They're right here.
Okay, I was just looking at your agenda. I'm sorry, uh, the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, school committee meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero zero.
So it's the only one?
That looks like we don't have the thirteenth in here, Sharon.
That's tonight.
Oh, okay.
We're all getting used to this in-person thing.
Approval of the warrants, um, is there a motion to approve the warrant? Moved in second, it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero zero. Uh, next up is public participation. If there, uh, is anybody in the remote audience who has something to say, or has a comment to make on something that's not otherwise on the agenda, um, now is the time, and I'm going to look to Mr. Kuna to assist me in seeing any raised hands.
Through the chair, um, no one has raised hands right now, but could I just make a recommendation, please? If everyone could speak a little bit closer to the mic, I've received a few messages that it's a little bit hard to hear. Um, and especially when people are talking, it's tough for audience members to distinguish who is talking. So I don't know how we would address that, but at least if we can speak closer to the mic, uh, it would help the audience at home. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no public participation, uh, we're gonna move on to informational reports, the student representative.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just before I, I introduce Sarah, um, I want to make sure that I recognize Sarah for her efforts. I think Sarah came with a group of students here two years ago in front of the committee and um, asked that the district hire someone with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And um, I was not able to meet that request um, over the next two years, and the students didn't take no for an answer. And they um, worked collaboratively with uh, people in the district, they came back to the committee. I think they um, had some parent support, some community support, and uh, ultimately resulted in um, getting this position funded through town meeting and um, we're um, able to have Sarah introduce our new Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion to the committee tonight. So I wanna make sure I recognize Sarah, and Sarah represents many students. So again, I think Sarah had a leading role, but I think there are many student voices who were included here, which is really why I wanted Sarah to make the introduction to the committee. And I would also be remiss to not recognize Mr. Larkin, who has put in a tremendous amount of hours organizing the, uh, the entire search process and um, really making it fully inclusive. And the feedback that we got um, from um, all of the candidates, where they were very impressed with the organization of the process, the questions, and the thoroughness of um, of, of the presentation. And I think making sure Burlington is represented well, as we're trying to attract people of Mr. Porch's talent. I think that is something that was really important, and Patrick did a, did a great job. I know he won't take credit for it, but he uh, he was um, he was really working closely. So, uh, with that, again, Sarah, I wanted to make sure I, I um, acknowledged your work, so, uh, the student report, um, Sarah Shake.
Thank you so much. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I was just wondering, should I do like the introductions first, or should I do like my report first?
Sarah, you can make that decision right now, and we'll support either one. What do you wanna do?
Um, I guess I can do the report first, and then I'll do the introduction, just to get the report over with. Okay, um, so, uh, well, first thing I wanted to address, um, as part of the report, is that today's the first day of Ramadan. And I kind of just broke fast like two seconds ago, um, during this meeting. And um, I, I just wanted to tell like, I guess, the committee and the school community, like, in general, um, who's watching this meeting, that um, like Ramadan has started. Um, us Muslims fast for thirty days straight, um, from sunrise to sunset. Um, it's one of our pillars of Islam, something that all of us Muslims strive to abide by. Um, and during this time, we kind of reflect on ourselves and our purity, our intentions, and kind of try to empathize with others as we fast every single day and continue to pray. So, um, as always, like through COVID, um, our journey or our experience celebrating Ramadan is very different, especially when we can't go into the mosque, um, the Islamic Center of Burlington, as much as we would like to. Um, and we cannot pray with a lot of our, like, family members, um, and things like that. So I just wanted to say and kind of wish everybody who's celebrating Ramadan Gharim and Ramadan Mubarak, um, to those who are celebrating, and I'm hopeful that I will have a safe and a blessed Ramadan month. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, the second thing that I would talk about was, um, kind of like the senior class in general. So, um, the senior student council and the exec board have been trying to pull some sort of event off um, at the end of the year before graduation and all of the formal, um, formal events, I would say. Um, and I was very hopeful that we would get to have some sort of, of prom type of situation. But obviously, because of the increase in the COVID cases and the guidelines provided by DSE, uh, we won't be able to have like a prom event that we even hoped to have. Um, and obviously, it's very saddening and disheartening to hear, but, um, but the student council and the exec board, we are all trying to plan at least something else that we can do as a club. Um, so we did send out like a survey out to the entire class this week, which is due on Friday, to kind of generate um, like any additional ideas that people have, and also make sure that if we have some sort of event, that people feel safe to attend it. Um, and that that was a concern for a lot of students too, so, um, so all of that is a work in progress right now. Another thing that's happening with seniors is that we're all committing to colleges and our future plans. Um, so you can actually go to our ins, to um, the Instagram account, PHS Sendoffs twenty twenty-one, where you can see um, where each student is going after graduating PHS. So that's really exciting that's happening in the next we, week or so. The senior internships are starting on the third, um, which I did mention before. And as Dr. Conti basically announced and um, told everybody that the full return to the school, which was supposed to happen the week after April vacation, will now be extended to May third, which means that a senior class, those who are going on internships will now be able to attend class, um, fully in person with all cohorts like together. Um, and I did say this in the past meetings, and so that like, I really, like, we all really wanted, or we, we all really looked forward to that, um, because we have been split up in cohorts throughout the entire year, and we hope to have at least that one week where we're all together. But um, obviously, we know that COVID hasn't gone away, and we understand that. But obviously, we know that COVID hasn't gone away, and we understand the guidelines that D E C and CDC and everybody has provided. So I guess we are just excited to go on our internships, and those who will be in the building will be part of like the full return. And when it comes to the freshman student council, they had to cancel their Nothing But Kicks fundraiser, so they're looking for different, for different like alternatives to do instead. The junior student council actually had a True North fundraiser last week, I think. And that was a success, so there's that. And I think, I think that is it for my report. If anybody has any questions or any comments before I do the introduction.
Sarah, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry that you're missing that week together, it just, the numbers didn't look positive. So again, again, I apologize for that.
So, I feel very honored to be here and to introduce you to Mr. Raymond Porch, who will be our director of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the Burlington Public Schools. Cheers to this. It was a process, as Dr. Conti mentioned, since the past two years. And I would also say it has been continuing since many years before then. There have been all the teachers who have been part of this process, and I want to commend each one of them who have supported us students and encouraged us to make this happen. And the fact that I get to introduce him today is huge for me. So when I, when we talk about like how the director of DI was hired, we had amazing applicants. We had like forty-six applicants, and I was part of the first round, like first like screening slash interview committee. And I was very fortunate to be part of the process and pick our three finalists, one of them being Mr. Porch. And he stood out to all of us through his experience, through his charisma, through the interview. And, and we were really excited to have him be like one of the finalists. And as a finalist, he met with the three stakeholder groups, students, teachers, and parents. And one of the student group, which I was also part of, we really, really, really enjoyed speaking with him for that four or five minute period that we had. As far as like us, all of us students who were in the stakeholder group felt, we thought that he was super engaging, and he made sure to listen to each one of us and have like active discussions throughout the interview. He made sure that our voice was heard and appreciated. And that's something that I think we all, all of us students want to see throughout the entire school system. We also thought that he can treat it like students as equals and equal partners, which obviously benefits us as we want to be able to say like, we want to see this change and work with the adults to create that change. And he made us feel very comfortable with him to share our thoughts and ideas on different topics. And as the press release stated, he has a lot of experience in secondary, post-secondary education, specifically in like public charter and private schools. And he was the director of school climate, culture, and equity and cultural responsive teaching and learning before he accepted this position here. And I think he's going to bring a lot of value and a lot of interesting things into our district. And I was really glad to be one of the students who met him last week when he came in to sign his contract, and we filmed TikTok videos that you might have seen on Twitter and Instagram. It was a very fun experience for all of us. And I think when I talk about from all students, I think we really appreciated the fact that we were all so involved in this entire process and the fact that we felt like we were heard and appreciated. So welcome, Mr. Porch, to Burlington Public Schools. And I don't know who's going to go next, but I think I know that Martha Duffield, she wanted to give an introduction to.
Sarah, why don't we just introduce Ray to the committee first, and then we can take comments after. So, Mr. Porch, are you welcome? And I'll introduce you to the Burlington School Committee members.
Thank you so much. Sarah, you are, you thoroughly embarrassed me here, so I thank you for doing that. Those young people are fantastic, first and foremost. I'd like to open with, you folks have been fortunate in that you've developed these young people to advocate for themselves in a way that is powerful and dynamic. Our young people have a wonderful way of being resilient and really being committed. And sometimes in our haste and in our work, we can underappreciate. And I say we collectively, you know, like where we are, right? And so clearly, in Burlington, that has been something that's been a focus, it's been an asset. And so I commend you all for putting in that effort to partnership with your young people, because they were fantastic. The interview process was fantastic, I really enjoyed what I learned about the school district, what I learned about the educators, what I learned about leadership in the district, as well as just culminating with spending time with some amazing young people who I am looking forward to being, being present when they commence, whatever that looks like, celebrating their success, and also staying, remaining an ear for them to bend in any way, you know, support them in any way that I can. That said, I am excited about this opportunity. I look forward to working with this group and with this school district and with Dr. Conti and Patrick. They've been terrific to kind of collaborate with and work with. Everybody's been very welcoming. I think the work that, you know, this district has decided to embark on with this work is really important work. We're all going through this experience in these days and times around social justice and voice and making sure that we are, you know, in lockstep with policies that make sense, that are equitable for folks to feel a part, as Dr. Conti would say, of the community. And I look forward to working with the educators in the district, the students, the parents. I'm looking forward to getting going and listening to folks and hearing their perspectives and thoughts and ideas and suggestions. I'm a big fan of collaboration and co-constraining. And I hope to add value to the wonderful things that are happening in the short term as well as in the long term and hope to, you know, bring some, some energy in different ways and, you know, be a listener in some spaces and really kind of help us move forward together and do really good work for our young people and for our Burlington School community as a whole. So I really appreciate the opportunity and I thank everybody who was a part of the process, as well as Dr. Conti and Mr. Larkin.
Thank you very much.
I want to make sure I give the school committee a chance to welcome you individually. So, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you want to...
Yes, before I do, I just, I'm getting a message that we're having a problem with our audio.
I think it's fixed.
Is it fixed now?
Well...
Mr. Porch, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
At the beginning of our meeting, nobody could hear because B Cat didn't know we were having a live meeting, and Brad took care of it.
Oh, jeez. Of course he did, on his birthday too.
So, okay, so we're back on track. Comments, questions?
And again, if you could please introduce yourselves as well. And, Mr. Porch, you'll meet everyone without a mask at some point, so it'll be better to put faces with names. But certainly, we can, again, I'd like the committee to introduce themselves to Mr. Porch.
Hi, Mr. Porch, my name is Carl Foss, just want to say welcome, and I'm excited to work with you.
Nice to meet you, Carl.
Hi, my name is Martha Simon, and I want to welcome you, and I'm just delighted that you're on board and that we found somebody with the kind of experience and skill that you bring to us. I'm, I'm, I mean, hearing, as you know, hearing Sarah speak about this process, I was, I'm just really moved and appreciative of these students like Sarah, who have worked for numbers of years to have us get to this point where we could hire someone in this position and someone as great as you. We, well, we're expecting, right? I also think that what Sarah didn't say and what Dr. Conti didn't say is that a lot of the students and teachers have been working on requesting not just a director of equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion, but a number of other action items. And I keep looking over there, because that's where Mr. Porch's picture is, but I think I'm supposed to look over there. But there are other action items that our teachers have been working on, that our students have been working on, that our administrators have been working on, and we are in process, which is really exciting. But I'm just really pleased that we'll be able to move forward in a much more, I think, positive, productive way. I love that you want to collaborate, because I think there are a lot of people in the district who want to collaborate on these issues. I also want to thank the hiring committee, all of the people on the hiring committee, as well as the students, Mr. Larkin, and everyone who put effort into making this happen. I want to thank the town for approving the position, so we could do this hiring process now, so that you can start onboard on July first. That's really going to give us a real head start, I think. And I look forward to working together to move our district forward toward more equity and belonging for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martha, as do I.
Hi, Mr. Porch, I'm Chris Monaco, and I'm very happy to meet you. And I look forward to getting to know you in person.
Thank you so much. Chris, as do I, I'm looking forward to it as well.
My turn. It's nice to see you again. I was able to participate in part of that interview process, and I think we made a really good choice. I, Catherine Bond, I've had to reintroduce myself, I guess. And I do look forward to working with you and collaborating, and welcome aboard, and, you know, best to you. And I have all the confidence in the world.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you.
I'm Mr. Porch. I've been on the school committee for quite a while, and this position, I think, has been a long time coming. And so like everybody else, I'm looking forward to working with you. I welcome you to Burlington, look forward to meeting with you personally as we move forward. And I hope you enjoy your stay here with us. So, on behalf of the committee, thank you for joining us, congratulations on getting the position, and we all look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure...
Oh, was Ms. Duffield?
If you wanted to open it up now for other comments.
Yeah, I believe it was Martha Duffield had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Porch, welcome. I don't know if you remember, but I was on the parent hiring committee. My name is Martha Duffield, and I really enjoyed meeting you in the interview. I was very impressed with your skills and, you know, on a personal level, I have two biracial children. And, you know, it really means so much for me to have somebody in your role that they can go to and will be a safe person for them. And then on a community level, I'm the president of Burlington Against Racism, and we're a community-based organization that works on anti-racist policy. And we're just really excited to work together and support you in this role, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and of course, I remember you quite well. So I'm glad you could be here tonight, and I appreciate all the efforts that you've put in to grow this community. So I'm looking forward to working with you as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Porch, thank you very much for joining us on a Tuesday evening. We appreciate it, I think we're going to get you out to the district after break sometime to start meeting some students and principals and seeing the schools. So I look forward to coordinating that date and seeing you in person in a couple weeks. So again, welcome aboard, and it'll be July first, be before you know it. So, so I hope you, I wish you a very successful year end in your current position.
So we cannot hear, like, it says like Bob can't hear, the host is muted, so.
Well, Sarah, I can hear you.
Okay. Mr. Porch, I'm not sure you can hear me.
Can you? Yes, all right. All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
We'll see you in a couple weeks.
And it'll be July first, before you know it, is what I said. So finish your current position, and we'll, I look forward to working with you. So I'll connect with you in the near future.
Beautiful, thank you.
All, have a great night.
Thank you for coming.
No worries. Hey, Dr. Conti, moving on.
Subcommittee reports, actually, anybody from the school committee have any subcommittee reports?
Yes, there was a Burlington Youth and Family Services Board meeting since our last committee meeting. And we actually talked about a few issues that are related to the schools. So I just wanted to report that the Youth and Family Services did host four seminars, webinars. One was on teen depression and suicide, one was on anxiety, one was on parent self-care during COVID, and another was on the middle school hybrid learning. They had about fifty people registered for each one of those, and those also are, were recorded. So if somebody did have an interest in one of those topics, I actually had wanted to get to the webinar that Mr. John Matalman gave on anxiety, I've heard a lot of good things about him as a presenter. You can go to the Burlington Youth and Family Services webpage on the Burlington Town webpage, website. Although I'm not sure exactly if they're up yet, but they are going to be up. We also spent some time talking about integrating and looking at the big picture of social and counseling services in the town. We have a mental health clinic in town, which is called the Burlington Youth and Family Services, and I don't think everyone knows about that. The police department has added an addiction specialist and a crisis intervention person in the last couple of years. The public school, the public schools, we've been doing a lot of work on mental health, and we just this year had some presentations. And we talked about wanting to make sure that everybody keeps the big picture and that we're working together. There's certainly a need for all of the services, we don't, we're not duplicating anything, but trying to make sure that we use the services in the most effective way to help the residents and the children of Burlington. We also talked about May, which isn't yet, but May is the Child Mental Health Awareness Month. And we got permission to light up the common green. So in May, when the common is lit up green, if we can all be aware of the issues of child mental health awareness. And one of the statistics that we got brought up was that in order to get a program bed for mental health issues, it has doubled since COVID started. Before COVID, it was a fourteen day wait for children to get a bed in a mental health facility, and it is now up to thirty days. We have children waiting for days and days in emergency rooms or in a hospital in order to find treatment that they need. And so these are really important issues that we all are aware of, and yet we need to remind ourselves again. And we also discussed in advance the vigil that was held on the common for Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in support of them and against the hatred that has come up and increased in the last year. There have been, you all know, numerous episodes, and I want to send my, you know, condolences to everybody who's affected by it, and on some level, we all are. I think that's important for us to remember, because we're all connected. So those were, that was a report I wanted to make sure people knew about, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee, subcommittee reports?
Mr. Chair, just very briefly, we have a posted wellness committee meeting Thursday at two that's been canceled. So I just want to make sure I say that publicly, the wellness committee meeting on Thursday at two o'clock has been canceled.
Good. Next item is Ways and Means, Roger Do...
Uh, next item is Ways and Means. Roger, do you have anything at this stage? You waiting for the budget or?
Nothing, uh, real high profile. We're looking forward to the rest of the budget discussions this evening. We've got a subcommittee meeting tomorrow at six o'clock to vote, for the subcommittee to do its votes on the various budgets, followed by the Ways and Means meeting at seven tomorrow. So, looking forward to the process wrapping up, and, uh, really appreciate all the materials that, uh, have been passed over to the subcommittee. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Roger.
Uh, Chris?
Is the Ways and Means meeting, um, virtual? Are we supposed to go to it?
I, uh, Ways and Means tomorrow night is a remote meeting, Roger, I assume?
Yes, it's a remote meeting, and I think it's been, I know it's been posted for Ways and Means. I didn't notice whether it was posted for the school committee.
Uh, it has been posted, Roger.
So, we're, what's the, um, is it just us and Shashin that's on tomorrow night? On your agenda?
There's the operating.
The, uh, accommodated Shashin Essex and Minuteman. We'll do warrant articles another time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven on the agenda, uh, coronavirus update from the superintendent, elementary and secondary schedules update. Dr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, we are starting our week two of our full day return at the elementary school. I speak with a group of parents regularly, and the parents of elementary children after week one said it was, they hadn't seen smiles on their children like that in a, in a long time. I think there was, uh, positive reviews, um, from the kids. I think the kids were tired. I think some of the adults were, were getting their sea legs back in terms of, uh, full days. Um, one parent commented that, um, her children came home and put their iPads away because they didn't have an afternoon, uh, remote lesson, and they went outside and played. And so, she felt, um, it was sort of a, almost a return to, uh, more of a return to normal. Um, and, uh, that it happened seamlessly is a result of a tremendous amount of hard work by our elementary principals and their teachers and staff. So, I, I just want to make sure I, I commend them. And so, we are now in, um, in week two, and I think, uh, they're saying spring break is coming at a good time. So, I'm not sure that's, uh, that's a, that's a good thing, but I want, I want to make sure I recognize their efforts. And, uh, I, I do think, uh, the five days that we were, had elementary children in school prior to opening full days has really helped the transition go, um, as, as smoothly as possible. I do want to get back to, um, elementary, um, in particular, in, in, in one second. The middle school, um, the homeroom assignments have been, um, distributed and communicated to families and teachers. We did have to, um, recreate some homerooms to distribute the kids to maximize social distancing. My understanding is all the students remain on their teams, but might have a new homeroom, um, in order, again, to balance out the, the class sizes. We are prepared and will be starting the full five days a week on Monday, April twenty-sixth, so on the Monday returning from, from vacation. That was our slated day for the, um, high school as well, but we are pushing the high school until five days later, till May third on the Monday. The numbers at the high school, um, had increased significantly. We have about a hundred and thirty students out as close contacts. Um, most of those are high school students. Um, the majority are, are high school students, um, and we were concerned. So, we wanted to make sure that we, um, had a two-week break and that we would look at the numbers and be ready to start again on, on Monday, May third. All the decisions have, um, benefits and drawbacks, and I think the drawback to the high school is the one that Sarah mentioned, is that, uh, the seniors will be leaving on, uh, their senior internships on May third. The benefit to the school will be, will have fewer students, um, in the building, and distancing will be improved. But the downside is there'll be seniors that have not had the opportunity to go to school with some of their classmates, uh, all year. So, I, I, um, the decision wasn't made, um, lightly, but I think that we're trying to make the right decisions to maximize the students in-person learning, and I think that's something that's gonna happen. Bob is here. The bus routes for the middle school and the high school have to change because we're not busing only half the students on Monday and Tuesday, and half the students on Thursday and Friday. So, Bob, the bus routes have been, um, redesigned, and the middle and high school routes are done. And, um, we're going to have, um, students able to take buses five days a week at the middle and high school level. I just want to say a word of caution, though. The state has removed all of the distancing guidelines for school buses, yet the distancing guidelines remain for being in class, um, in a mask, and for unmasked activities, it's still six feet. So, we're gonna have students on buses. We may have students on buses and, um, not have the same distancing, um, that we're having in school or, or outside of school. But recognizing we have to recreate the routes to get both cohorts of students in. So, I just want to remind parents that students have to be masked when they're on the bus. The windows will be open on the bus, so if it's a chilly morning, uh, please make sure your, your children are dressed appropriately. And we are gonna do the best that we can. Um, contact tracing on a school bus is very difficult. Contact tracing in classrooms is very difficult, but it's even more difficult. So, that means if we have positive cases on school buses, we may have more students out. My understanding is the State Department of Public Health is reconsidering how they define close contact. So, I think that may be a positive change, but right now, even though school social distancing has been reduced to three feet, the contact tracing from the mass, so the three feet is from the Department of Ed, the contact tracing from the mass, DPH, is still six feet. So, for every positive, we're identifying typically twice as many close contacts. So, again, the spacing requirements have been eliminated on the bus, but the contact tracing requirements are still the same. So, if we have a bus of forty-five, fifty kids, um, we could have many more students out. So, if the goal here is to have students attend in person, we still have lots of conflicting guidelines to manage, and we want to make sure that we're trying to do that safely. We're seeing an uptick in cases, but still, we're seeing a mix of cases coming in from the outside, um, and sort of we're watching the cases in school. We have not seen any clusters happening in school. So, I know that the precautions, the mitigations that we have in school are working. So, getting back to elementary transportation, we said we would look at elementary transportation, um, at the end of April because we're re, reconfiguring the middle school and high school because we have to. My recommendation is, and we met with all the administrators today, as difficult as contact tracing is gonna be for middle school and high school students, at three to a seat at some of our elementary schools, it's gonna be impossible. So, my recommendation is going to keep the elementary bus capacity as it is, um, for another little while moving forward. And I'm hoping by doing that, we will have elementary students in school more by being cautious on the, on the bus. And I know there may be some feedback or pushback on that, but I feel like that's the best way to keep elementary students in school. I feel like families, I hope, have already arranged their work lives and their daily lives to get their children, um, to school, and I just don't want to disrupt that part of the, um, elementary day and have more students on quarantine than we possibly need to. Can't avoid doing that at the middle and high, again, because we're combining the, the cohorts. So, um, I know I talked for a while. Um, Patrick, I'm not sure if you want to add anything. Uh, Patrick was earlier at the Board of Health meeting and, and came in now. But I think that's, that was the gist of our conversation. So, again, elementaries are in. I think students are enjoying the full day. We had talked about expanding the bus service. I don't, I'm not recommending doing that at the elementary level. Middle school is Monday, April twenty-sixth for full days with new bus routes. High school is May third with new bus routes.
Hey, uh, Patrick, anything to report from the Board of Health?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna, um, say what I said at the Board of Health meeting in regards to the support from Susan Luminalo. Um, she's been a great partner in collaborating with us on a daily basis, multiple times daily, um, working with our school nurses, who I also want to highlight their work, um, as things have picked up again as well. Um, it's been a lot of hours beyond the school day and on weekends, just to make sure that we are making contact with families and kids affected by, um, positive cases. So, that was, that was pretty much, um, again, they were thankful, um, and the Board of Health has been very supportive, so we appreciate that. It's made our life a lot easier.
Thank you. Questions or comments for either Dr. Conti or Mr. Larkin? Chris?
Just a quick question. Eric, um, I heard today that, uh, at least at the elementary level, there are some changes in buses?
Um, do you know what type of changes, of changes in routes?
All I know is my granddaughter's getting a new bus on Monday. Fox Hill School.
Was that because of her behavior, Bob? Is that?
I think, I think it might be. She's the one that takes the, um, the chocolate bunnies and puts a little hole in the bottom and fills them with ketchup and mustard and gives them to her brothers.
That explains it.
That explains the bus change. Uh, no, I, I just, I got asked today, why is she getting a new bus on Monday?
Um, any, any bus changes, I'm sorry, through the chair, but any bus changes right now are really just in, um, a, a phase for planning. Uh, so while we have new routes, uh, we have not shared any of them publicly. So, why, those would have been distributed, I'm not really sure because they're not finalized yet. Uh, they haven't been posted on any websites.
Does that mean she's not getting a new bus on Monday?
Correct. Um, no new buses are physically in place yet. We're still in the planning phase of it.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else with respect to Dr. Conti's report?
I, I feel like I have to ask this, but I feel like it's like opening, you know, a can of worms. I, I support your decision to not increase the, uh, participation on the buses at the elementary level to try to keep our COVID numbers down. But you also referred to three to a seat, and I just wonder if at some point there could be, um, two to a seat, you know, or some, so that there's thirty kids on a bus, or, you know, I, I don't know what the total number is right now, but maybe if we could double, but if it's one to a seat, could we go to two to a seat? Or, you know, is that an option possibly going forward?
Through the chair, um, again, I'd say anything is possible. You all know it's about sixty-five thousand dollars a year for a bus. We talked today potentially about, we, we utilize eighteen buses. The middle school uses all eighteen. High school uses nine. Francis Wyman uses nine. Bob, I should have this memorized by now. Pine Glen?
Five.
And?
So, Pine Glen uses five, uh, Fox Hill uses seven, and Memorial uses six buses.
So, that's how we get the three tiers, and we, we utilize the buses. We have talked, because, um, there is potential, and I'm gonna say that again, there is potential. We need to survey parents and have the conversation here. But if we keep our kindergarten program as a, um, full-day program where they are dismissed with the first through fifth graders into next fall, we may have some transportation savings that we could potentially add a nineteenth bus, Ms. Simon, at no cost. So, that might be something that we can look at, especially for some of our more high-density, um, residential areas. Uh, we may be able to, um, alleviate some, um, capacity, uh, challenges that we have, we have in the bus. So, again, I, I feel like every time I answer your question, it's if, 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 but, but I, I do think it's something that we are looking at and we are considering. I just know that we had discussed specifically with this committee about looking at expanding the bus capacity at the elementary level at the end of April because we were redesigning for middle and high school, and I am not, I am not making that recommendation, uh, at this time.
How many, through the chair, if I could, uh, follow up, how many students are we allowing on the bus currently at the elementary level, per bus?
So, the current guideline prior to this week would be, uh, one per seat unless you're a family member.
Right.
Uh, and then we could put two in a seat.
And there's, so there's about thirty kids on a bus now?
That, that's a typical average, yes, on elementary buses.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And again, we also have walking perimeters, which we have not established, uh, before. So, the walking perimeters were designed, um, individually for every school. So, um, I think you mentioned at Pine Glen, it was?
Point six miles.
What?
Point six, zero point six miles.
So, zero point six miles, so anyone within that radius would be expected to, um, walk to school. I think the state regs are a mile and a half or something, so we're being, um, we're being generous. Um, we don't have that walking radius at Marshall Simon. So, again, the bus routes that we're designing for the middle school are going to be, um, full routes, and, um, we're not gonna extend that walking radius at the high school. So, again, there'll be, um, new routes. Bob, when, when are we, we're talking about putting a letter out from my office, I think, in the next day or so, and then trying to get the, uh, bus routes, um, public, um, by the end of the week? Is that, uh, we're trying, or?
Uh, my intention is sooner.
Okay.
So, if everything is confirmed, I would definitely say before the end of the week, but I'm hoping in the next day or two.
And, uh, this is like a restart to the year, so you all know it usually takes us a couple of weeks to shake out, um, bus stops and bus routes. And, um, so this is, we're gonna be, it's gonna be a restart, and we're gonna have some of that same churn that we have, uh, every, every fall. Um, again, I, I would say, and, um, I think I mentioned this in my, um, connected to parents, is one of our concerns is we had, again, I'm gonna say, about, uh, twenty-five positive cases at Burlington High School up through last week, and we had, uh, almost half that number in only last week. So, we were concerned that the numbers were growing. I know the weather is getting better. I know there are many activities that students want to participate in. But it's just a reminder, the pandemic isn't over. We're sort of racing against getting people vaccinated, and I hope students can be included in that. If they're talking about sixteen and over, I think that would include some of our, our high school students. And, um, but I'd still like to, um, recommend that, um, um, families and students practice precaution, and that will allow more flexibility in terms of activities moving, uh, moving forward. And so, I think that's, um, that's the challenge. So, I, I'm, I'm heartbroken for some of the activities that we can't, um, celebrations that we can't typically have or have as, as we typically have, but, uh, we will do our best to recognize, um, all of their accomplishments as, and as safely as we, as we can. And I know the high school's working very, very hard on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing nothing further on that item, we're gonna move on to, um, item seven B, monthly financial review. Nicole?
Thanks. Um, so you have in front of you the monthly financials, um, as they're presented each month. For the revolving summary, um, the school lunch, you can see that the deficit has, um, increased a little bit over, uh, around fifty thousand over the, the prior, um, the prior month. Um, and then also with, um, Sprouts Daycare, that deficit has also increased a little. The reason for this is there was, um, three pay periods in the, in the, the last month. There were three pay periods in the last month, um, instead of the two. Um, so with the, the lagging revenues, um, one month in arrears, um, is the reason for that there. Um, and then in terms of operating and accommodated, um, the numbers are very consistent with, um, the prior month. So, if anyone has any questions, I can field them.
Nicole, with the before and after school program, through the chair, may I ask a question if no one else has a question, Mr. Chair?
No, good.
Uh, the before and after school program, we kept the hours the same, but, um, the district is picking up the cost for the first half of the day, so is, that's gonna impact the before and after school revolving account? Is that, I'm just trying to, so we, we should see that number coming down?
Yes.
Some? So, just for the committees. Some. So just for the committee's, um, knowledge, we're, we're using our before and after school staff to help manage, uh, lunch and recess and some specials. And so we're obviously not charging parents for that time, but our payroll is staying the same. So the district is picking up the cost of that part of the before and after school program. And for the time after school that extends till four P M., then parents are paying for, for that shortened time for after-school care. So you should see the, um, revolving account. Again, if you see that more expenses in that account, it's because, again, we're, we're utilizing that staff.
Any questions? Martha?
Um, I was just wondering, um, the elementary summer support staff, the, um, deficit got bigger, and I'm wondering what we're using that money for, if it's not summer yet?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, it's line, uh, thirty-three on page two of your report. Elementary summer support staff. And it looked like it went from eighty-nine thousand to a hundred twenty-four thousand?
Uh, I'd have to look in, into that and I get back to you, Martha.
Okay. I mean, what is that, would that typically be summer staff, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If you could check on that. Um, and the other thing is line number twenty-one, teacher attendance, maybe I'm looking at the wrong line. That didn't change, but, um, that's my understanding, is that the, in the, every time a teacher takes a day off, they don't get that as an incent, they don't get that as an incentive? Is that the right line that I'm looking at, or is that a different line?
Yes, no, you're correct.
So does that mean nobody used up their teacher incentive this month?
Or, uh, I think we just didn't have the, um, all of the, the figures to adjust for this month by the time we were running the report.
Okay, so the report got run, but there may have been some?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we have how many months left now? We have May and June, and we have a leeway of seventeen thousand? No. Where do we have leeway now?
One forty-two.
Oh, a hundred and forty-two? Okay. So there's room. Okay. I won't ask you if you're comfortable with that level, but it, it's, uh, it's a chunk of money. Good. Thank you.
You got anything further on those reports, Nicole?
No.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I have any questions, rather.
I'm sorry, sure, go ahead, Roger.
Certainly, the, uh, that's it, the school lunch is looking worse. Do we expect any of the money that we were anticipating getting to come in before the end of the year, before the books have to close? Or how much of it?
Through the chair. Yes, so, um, some of the funds were coming from the town's allocation of COVID relief. They have received those funds. Um, we just typically wait until the end of the year to sort of settle this account out, if that makes sense. So the funds are available. We just, we just haven't voted to, um, to make the adjustments for the funding of the deficit.
All right. It's not really a problem, but thanks.
Uh, anything else on this item? Seeing nothing. Uh, move on to the school building facilities. Fox Hill Statement of Interest, Dr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you've all been invited to the, um, oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. Chris, you, Ms. Monica, you, uh?
Madam Chair. Hey, hey, Madam Chair, how you doing?
Whatever.
I apologize. Uh, it's, uh, I guess it's getting late. Um, you all have been invited to the Mass School Building Authority. We call it MSBA. The Mass School Building Authority Board Meeting, uh, tomorrow at ten o'clock. Um, the invitation is a positive, uh, step forward. Obviously, um, we won't be able to celebrate until the board votes, but, um, I think the fact that they are inviting us is a good indication that the project will be moving, certainly being strongly considered, and, and I hope will be moving, uh, moving forward. And, um, they may ask for, uh, some comments from the community. So again, Mr. Chair, um, I'm assuming they would, um, ask you to make those. We've invited, um, Senator Friedman, Representative Gordon, we've, um, some, a board, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, um, and the town's, um, Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager to, to attend as well. I think we also invited the moderator, so we should have, again, if people want to attend. The meetings virtually are actually more convenient than driving into Boston and, uh, and trying to park and to, uh, to attend the meeting, um, attend the meeting that way. So, um, again, I do think this is a positive. I think in my conversations with MSBA prior to this, one of the highlights that they mentioned was the, um, video footage that Bob worked really hard to put together, both, uh, the drone footage and the, um, three-dimensional uh, video, um, that Bob had done. So Bob, thank you for that. I think they got a very clear picture of the, of the building. And, um, and I think that helped, uh, that helped with the decision. So we're there. I do want to stress, um, if the vote is successful tomorrow, um, that's the start of a very structured process. If the state is going to share the cost of this building, um, they control the process. And so it's, it's a very scripted seven-year process that, uh, the project would be kicked off till June one. So, again, if people are hearing, we're going to construct a new elementary school, which I think, again, with a successful vote, we will start in that process. This year's kindergartens, kindergarten students will not be there to experience, um, that building. So it's just, it's, it's, it's a scripted process. So I think that's what it is. We'll be entering into what's called feasibility. We still have a lot of work to do, uh, in terms of, um, what the building is, what it would look like. We have to hire a project manager. So there are, again, scripted steps that we need to go through that are dictated by the School Building Authority. And, um, they are great partners to have, and I think we've worked with them before, um, with the Memorial School and with the Marshall Simons renovation in addition. But it is their process, and so there are many times when people might ask you, why does it have to take seven years? Because that's, we want their money. That's the process. If you want the building in two years, then I have to say, then you got to pay for it yourself. So that's the, that's the trade-off. And, um, and I think that, uh, they've, they've always treated us well. We've had success working with them. So I just want to stress, there will be opportunity for people listening, if they want to be involved in the process, there'll be opportunities, um, to have that involvement. And those opportunities, again, are usually scripted by the Mass School Building Authority. And, uh, those opportunities will be in, um, uh, they would be advisory to the, the school committee, um, who would make, uh, any decisions that we have, in regards to this program moving, moving forward. So, again, that's tomorrow at ten. We'll make, uh, more of a public announcement after the MSBA, uh, board meeting. But, um, we have eight years of attempts with the, uh, high school renovation where we weren't invited to the board meeting. So I'm assuming this is a positive, um, a positive development. I think, as I've stated to the committee, I forget whether I wrote to you or spoke to you, is we can have one priority in terms of our statement of interest. Uh, priority this year was for the Fox Hill. Um, if moved forward, we will then go back and have our statement of interest, our priority be the renovation of Burlington High School. So we'll move back towards having that as a priority. Um, the decision on whether there are four elementary schools, the size of Fox Hill, or three, a conversation that we started, uh, a year and a half ago. Um, we will now have the opportunity to have that more formally. And at some point with feasibility in the design, we're going to have to discuss, um, again, whether Burlington is a three elementary school district or a four elementary school district. So I think MSBA realizes that we need to have that conversation as well. Enrollment projections, as Mr. Murphy will recall, is, um, we don't get to use our own enrollment projections. We have to use the enrollment projections that the Mass School Building Authority does for our community. So oftentimes, there may be a disagreement on the size of the school to build. But again, if you want to have a Mass School Building Authority as your partner, you need to utilize the, um, Mass School Building Authority's, um, enrollment projections. It's just very important that we give them accurate information about not only the, uh, enrollment that we have, but with the housing stock, with the houses changing, with some of the other, um, um, building that we're seeing in town that we try to project into the future, because this is a, you know, a forty- or fifty-year decision. Fox Hill, Bob was built in, what, nineteen sixty from your video? So, um, the, the schools need to, they'll, they'll be around for a long time. So I think that's one of the places we are. So, um, that's the, uh, that's the Fox Hill update.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Martha?
I know that, um, Dr. Conti said this tonight, and he's said it before, but I just want to reiterate that, um, if we are voted and accepted at the, the MSBA to do the project that we keep calling the Fox Hill Project, the decision of what that would look like has not been made yet. The school committee will then, as part of the process, the seven-year process, the first step will be for us to make a decision if we want to stay with our four di, school elementary districts, or if we want to go to a three-school elementary districts, or what our various options are. So that decision has not been made. We did have a conversation about it a year or so ago. But I just wanted to reiterate that, because it, people may hear only a little piece of it. And it's hard to understand when we call it the Fox Hill Project. Um, so that will be something we'll discuss in public in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Um, yeah, we'll see what happens tomorrow and play it by ear, but, um, certainly encouraging. Moving forward to item eight, our running agenda.
Excuse me, could we also, um, I just wanted to ask on that item, if we could stay on the school building facilities? Mr. Kimmel, I just wanted to know if you had any updates from the engineers or architects, or whoever is working on the feasibility, uh, not, I don't know. What's the name of the report they're working on? That they're looking at the, the high school renovation issues and trying to identify what the problems are and the scope of the problem, so?
So the name of the report is the High School Feasibility Study.
Okay.
Similar to what we would do with the MSBA project.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report back. That's new from last, last meeting. Um, so hopefully soon I will. Um, but it's just taking a little bit of time.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, communication, uh, item eight-eight, capital warrant articles approval.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, um, we've been voting on, oh, geez. I'm looking at Mrs. Monaco. I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, again. I will, uh,
Keep looking at her.
Give her the gavel. Um, um, the capital warrants, um, I think we've talked about, um, several of these, but, uh, not all of them. So I just want to make sure that, um, we look at these tonight. If the committee would, uh, like to ask questions, we can answer questions. I don't think we necessarily need to, um, have the vote tonight. I think we were prepared in case they were going to be brought up at Ways and Means, but it sounds like we're going to do capital, uh, warrants, um, at a later date. And tomorrow's presentation is just, uh, operating and, and accommodated. So Bob, have we presented all of these? I just want to?
Through the chair. Uh, no, we have not. Uh, you have only seen, the committee has only seen the B H S turf and track resurfacing for seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then the non-capital community custodial article, uh, for forty-seven thousand.
So again, we can introduce the others very, very quickly tonight, and then the, um, um, the total that we, we had from the guideline we have from town, Nicole, was about a million and a half dollars. Is that correct? So you can see we're, we're coming in under the million and a half request that, that, uh, the town had made, the, the threshold for us to have. So, um, I'm sure Bob will answer in more detail than, than I can right now, but the, um, the second on the list down is the, um, insulation and weather stripping for Burlington High School and Marshall Simons Middle School. Bob, you want to just briefly, again, why don't you just take over and you go from, you go from there?
So E C M. is energy control measure, and this is a project collaboration with town, uh, as part of us being a green community. Uh, so the way they establish their metrics is, is that, um, if you were to apply for funding or a grant in order to get some of the funding, uh, as being a green community member, certain things need to be done to the building first. Uh, so they don't want to put a new boiler in per se, if all your windows and doors are leaking. One of the requirements would be, is that the weather stripping, uh, and insulation, uh, is completed. The thing is, is that there are caps to the funding that they would approve for each one of these projects. So the middle school and the high school fall above those caps, which is why we're asking for warrant article funding. Um, in collaboration, again, with, uh, John Sanchez and Rachel Leonardo, we are doing, um, they are pushing forward on a grant for Memorial, Pine Glen, and Francis Wyman, uh, to complete those E C M. insulation and weather stripsing as well, too. So hopefully, if we were to get the grant funding and the warrant article, we would be able to complete all five of those buildings in this year. If you want me to move on, or if you have some questions?
You can move on.
Okay. Um, the next one, the Francis Wyman Intercom. So three years ago, we did a full fire alarm replacement, and we had intended to put an intercom system in as well. Um, the size of the building and the bids that came back, uh, were higher than expected, so we moved forward with the fire alarm only. The fire alarm does have a paging system capability, but does not have two-way capacity. So the existing intercom in the system in the building, um, is relative to the renovation back in ninety-six. While it's been functioning, it has been repaired. It is end of life, uh, and we do have a few modules down. Um, we also house, um, Sprouts and Before and After School and some other locations in that building that don't have communication. Um, so now with the new fire system, we can at least make communication to those systems, but again, there's no two-way communication. Parts are scarce for this as well, too, again, being an older system, so we've been able to maintain it. But it's definitely something that, uh, even if we aren't able to do it now, which I believe we should be able to, it's definitely something that you'll see continuously as a need for us in that building. The next one is, this request has been coming up lately. Um, so install sanitary products throughout our, um, bathrooms system-wide. Um, it is something that we used to have years ago, prior to me being in this position, well, a long time ago. Uh, and we have not had any of those dispensers and/or the supplies for them. The past couple of years, we've had more and more requests to not only have them in the nursing office, but to have them more available throughout, um, the buildings. So this would actually get us up and going to install these in all six buildings, uh, and then also give us about, um, a year's worth of supplies to get going. And the reason I have to say about is, um, we can only give a rough calculation. We'll have to obviously, you know, gauge how many we're using, uh, and then assess that as we move on. Uh, but we believe that we'll have a, a good start to get us going.
Questions?
Comment? They should have been there all along. We're a little late to the game on this one.
Agreed, Mr. Chair. Agreed. Former Madam Chair. But we're, 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 uh, trying to rectify the situation, I think, in all, in all six schools. The town has asked us to prioritize health and safety warrant articles, and so, um, I hope you see that there's a health and safety theme with all of our, all of our requests. And I think, um, we have plenty of other needs, but the reason that we are not putting them forward under, under the one and a half, um, million is we really are trying to prioritize our health and safety needs, uh, immediately, and we were hoping for a positive outcome from the Mass School Building Authority as well. And so I, I think it's, um, it's not our inability to spend the money, as Mr. Sagarino would tell me. It's we're just trying to, uh, be a good partner and follow, um, the health and safety priority that they asked us to follow.
Okay. Uh, and how about the last one, Bob?
If I could also comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, regarding the sanitary product dispensers, it's also an equity issue. And I think that's a really important piece, um, to add.
Bob?
Again, the last one is, um, we've been working on with, uh, Ms. Kasha. So Nicole, do you want to just briefly do the, the last one, which is a non-financial warrant article?
Yes, so the, the last one is to establish, um, a school accrued liability reserve fund. And basically, we have, um, employees that contractually have, uh, time on the books that, um, upon And basically, we have employees that contractually have time on the books that upon retirement or separation of service, we would need to pay out. I have been speaking with Jim Powers of Powers &amp; Sullivan, just to sort of get a, a handle on this situation, and he recommended a, a best practice would be to set up a, a fund such as this, so that we don't jeopardize our operating budget in a given year if we have an influx of retirements that we needed to pay these out for.
And what's the plan for funding it?
We're gonna, we're working with Darren, and we're going to work with Mr. Powers to see what sources can be. I think in future operating budgets, you'll see a line of funding that goes towards this, and we'll look at other potential sources as well. If there's any money at the end of the fiscal year, we, this committee could vote to move it into, to, to that, to that account as well. So I think there are a number of places, but I think the important conversation initially is to ask town meeting permission to set up the account. Again, we did speak to, we had a meeting with Darren this week, and Mr. Chair, it's, the, the town has to approve the, approve the establishment of the reserve fund, but they also have to accept the provision of mass general law as part of the motion. So I think I need to speak to you about, I think the language for the motion is important because they have to concurrently accept, is it chapter?
Chapter forty, section thirteen D.
Chapter forty, section thirteen D, as well as establish, as well as establish the, the account. So we'll, we'll have Darren give you the correct language, and he said both can be done concurrently from, from his opinion. And he said it might be that the town had already accepted that provision, but Nicole couldn't find it, and, and we were checking on that, but I, I'm not sure the town had, had accepted that provision already.
So we just have to vote it with that language to approve it, to get it on the warrant? Or that's what we have to, that's the language we have need for town meeting?
That's the language you need for town meeting. It is already on the warrant, but I'm not sure the warrant asks for them to accept the provision of the, the, the chapter forty, section thirteen D as, as part of the, as part of the motion. So I think Darren said we just have to talk to the moderator.
Okay.
And make sure the motion includes both the, the law and the chapter and, and the account at the same time. So we'll, we'll, I'll clarify that.
We're gonna be, we have to formally vote these sometime prior to town meeting anyway, right?
Yes.
Can we put that language in there, in that, during that, for that vote? Does that cover us, or it's already in the warrant, so?
So it's already in the warrant.
Without the, without the chapter?
Without the, the acceptance of it.
Okay.
But I, I think what Darren said is, like, it may, by them passing this, it may be that they're also adopting it, like those, the provisions of the law, but just to make it more clear, so that there's no.
We're gonna have a conversation with town council ahead of meeting, or ahead of town meeting, and we'll, we'll include you in that conversation. I just want to make sure that we, the motion is correct at town meeting, so it doesn't get.
We can get somebody to amend it on the floor if necessary, if there's language that has to be added.
Yeah, but I'm saying that's the one, that's the one sort of technical piece with this, with this article.
All right, well, with respect to the other ones, I don't know if Roger's still on the call. Our next meeting is not until two weeks from now. If they're going to be taking up the warrant articles prior to then, we might want to be voting these tonight.
Yeah.
Nicole, I don't know when Ways and, did Ways and Means get us a warrant schedule?
I don't think they've said it.
I don't, again, I don't think they've said it yet. You're, again, you're welcome to vote, I think we're under the number, if you want to be proactive and do that.
Do we need the exact wording to vote it?
But what?
Please. Do we have the warrant article wording?
Through the chair? I, oh, Roger, yes, go ahead.
Steve probably has the real answer here. I think he's got a couple of weeks lined up in the late part of May, right, Steve?
Yeah, so there's essentially, I think, three Wednesdays after tomorrow before town meeting. We have the school vacation week, which is typically a week that Ways and Means doesn't meet, and then we have two weeks, the twenty-eighth, and then I think five-three, and then Mount, or five-five, and then town, town meeting starts on five-ten. So we intend to meet on four-twenty-eight and the first Wednesday of five, first Wednesday of May, which would be five-five. So I think if you're meeting the, the, in two weeks, then the school articles could go on the, the five-five agenda for Ways and Means.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Maybe why don't we then plan to vote them next time, just to make sure whatever language we need is, is.
Yeah, because we can't vote about the language.
Yeah, so if you, if you've already put the, these items on the, on the warrants, if we can get copies of whatever that language is for each, for each one, we'll just read that as our motion to approve at the next meeting.
Just include it in the next agenda.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be on our next agenda. Anything else on the capital warrants or the articles? Seeing none, item eight-B, twenty-two-one dash twenty-two, teachers' school calendar, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, it's a, it's a first reading, so school committee should take this under consideration. I just want to point out a few things to the, to the committee, is that Labor Day is late again. So in working with the teachers' union, they enjoyed having the professional development days spread out throughout the year. So if you look at the calendar and you see the blue days, we still are having two professional development days in January, two professional development days in March. That brings, basically, our first day for grades one through twelve is going to be on Monday, August thirtieth, which is prior to Labor Day. And then our preschool and kindergarten students normally would start on the Tuesday after Labor Day or a week later on the seventh, but we're pushing that start until September ninth, because we have the Jewish holiday at the very start of the year. So again, recognizing that, we will start the kindergarten students and preschool students on, altogether on September ninth. So we, we will do that. First day for teachers we have as August twenty-sixth. We have a setup day and a professional development day on the, on the twenty-seventh. Again, parent-teacher conference days are, are going to be communicated. I think the, the holidays are there. November is always a tough month. We chose the eighth so we could have two five-day weeks in November, because the other weeks are, are broken up because of Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, and other than that, it's relatively straightforward. We have the last day of school as being June sixteenth. We still built in five snow days. I'm not sure the state is going to allow any remote teaching during snow days, and I'm getting back to our normal routine. The school committee would need to vote that anyway, and so if you don't vote to support that, we would have to make days available for snow. There's also a new Mass State Holiday, which is something where we need to incorporate, associated with Juneteenth. So we're, we're still figuring out how that holiday is going to be celebrated from a human resource perspective, please, is all I'm saying. And so we need to figure out whether, if it's, if it falls on a Saturday, is it celebrated on the Friday? And if it falls on the Sunday, is it celebrated on the Monday? That's, that's the only thing I'm talking about in terms of, we have to, we have to figure that out. But if that's a non-school day, a non-work day, then that would, again, we, that we would push, that would be a holiday, so we'd have to, that wouldn't count as a school day for us. So that would be something that we need to, need to consider. So again, so first reading, so if anyone has any questions, do you have the calendar and the backup?
And just for people listening, the first day of school is on August thirtieth, which is before Labor Day, but the Friday of that week is no school day?
Correct. So that's a four-day week, and then that's for grades one through twelve, and the first day of school for preschool and for kindergarten is Thursday, September ninth.
Okay, Christine?
Just strikes me that, I'm curious, why September ninth? It seems a little late for the kindergarten and preschool. I would think that you would have had them start a day or two earlier.
The Jewish holiday is on the seventh and eighth, and so we just want everyone to start on the same day, and it just makes sense to start after the Jewish holiday.
But the, the other kids will be in school, right?
No. Oh, the, yes. You mean the first to twelfth grade?
The, the first two twelfth graders will be there, and again, they can attend or not attend on the, on those religious days. I honestly just didn't want the first day of school to have the students make that choice, and I just think it's important that they all start, they all start together. If we were starting the, the, you know, the, the kindergarten students the week before, then that, I, that would be fine, but I just didn't want the first day to be separate.
Is there, is there a reason we can't start them the week before?
We've always had a week difference between the.
I know, but why?
I think there's orientation, there are other activities that happen. I think they bring the students in in small groups, and for next fall, Patrick, I think we, we're not doing kindergarten screening this spring as we normally would, so I think we're going to do a fall screening, which is going to take place between August thirtieth and September ninth. So again, I can't answer your question completely well, other than we typically bring the kids, the students, in in small groups during that first week at the kindergarten level.
Just a thought for future calendars? I have always wondered why we didn't just start them either the same day or the next day. So I've wondered that for years, maybe, maybe I'm missing something, but I wonder if we might make a change in the future.
Again, Mrs. Monaco, I, I think what I acknowledged is the expansion of the kindergarten program was not done thoughtfully currently. I think we had just some logistical issues that we needed to solve, and what we committed to is surveying parents in May to see if they want to maintain the, the full day, and then we committed to putting together a team of people and to do a thoughtful program expansion of kindergarten over the summer. So in terms of including specials, the length of specials, again, what the schedule is going to be, and we could also talk about the, the start date when we do the, sort of the more thoughtful conversation. Our kindergarten program has been in place, I saw a curriculum guide from nineteen seventy-seven. I think, I, I don't think our, that the content has been from nineteen seventy-seven, but I think the structure has been in place for, for a long time, I, I think. So we, we just need to have a more thoughtful conversation. We'll invite kindergarten teachers into that conversation. Patrick and the curriculum office will facilitate that, and then we'll have, obviously, principals and, and we'll get some feedback from parents as well, so.
It's just my two cents, I think that it'd be nice if all the kids went on their first day together.
Okay, we'll add that.
It's not a big deal, it's just a thought.
Martha?
I, I wanted to just comment on moving the professional development days into the school year. I know for a number of years, we've had three days before the school for professional development, and I think there's been a lot of value to that, but I also do believe that professional development is, been shown to be the most effective if it's spread out throughout a school year. So I, I very much support this. Sounds like you also are getting input from the teachers as well. And looking at this, I understand that there are issues with holidays and all that, but I also feel like we've kind of superloaded it to like January and March, and I would love to have you discuss with the teachers if moving one of those January or March days, say, into October, or, I, I know there are issues in November, but there aren't any PD days in October, and I think getting P, professional, especially if these are going to be ongoing, and people are going to be working on projects, to go from August to November is a long time to get programs going in a school year. And I, I do know that there's an awful lot of initiatives that we ask our teachers to do, and I think that if we're going to move the professional development days into the year, I'd love to see one of those days from either January or March, say, moved into October, so maybe you can continue to have that conversation.
Sure, we can bring that up in the joint labor management conversation.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, Deb Clark happens to be participating this evening, and I know Mrs. Monaco's comments were directed towards K only, but.
And preschool.
And preschool, but I think Ms. Clark.
Especially K.
Yeah, especially K, but Ms. Clark wanted to just discuss the importance of that week, so Deb, can you jump on?
Hi, can you guys all hear me?
Hi, Deb.
Yes, yes.
Hi, everyone. Now, so no, I just wanted to comment on the reason, reasoning behind us starting later and kindergarten starting later, probably more for the preschool. I don't want to step on any kindergarten shows, but, you know, those weeks, or that week before, while grades one and twelve are in, we're using that time, like Dr. Conti said, to catch up on any kindergarten screenings that weren't done this year. It's a different year, but usually we will do the kindergarten screenings. We'll also do early intervention evaluations at the preschool and get those done, so we can get kids in who are eligible by their third birthday. There's a lot of, you know, especially at the early elementary and preschool, there's a lot of materials prep, and, you know, certainly teachers are coming in to, even before school starts, to set up and do that, but the amount of prep materials and everything that are needed to start the year, it's just, it's insurmountable. You know, you've got many people working on that. The other thing is we have the open house for all of our families to come in at different times, so they do a tour, and then for students who've never been to school, we will have them come in maybe on a separate day. So there's a lot of prep for that, and that's why we have those extra days to build in for our students to come in.
Thanks, Deb.
Mr. Chair?
Martha?
I also wanted to, again, reiterate what Dr. Conti said about kindergarten screening, because I have actually gotten some questions from parents. When's kindergarten screening? When's kindergarten screening? And Dr. Conti just explained that it will be from August thirtieth to September ninth, that we'll be doing this, the kindergarten screening this year. So if parents were wondering, that's when it's going to be happening. And will that information be going out to our registered families soon, or?
Yes, so we'll be communicating that out, and I have some other information for the committee, but.
Great, thank you.
We can do that after the budget.
Thank you.
Chris?
Eric, the screening that you're doing that late in the game is for what purpose?
I'm going to have to ask Deb to jump back on the call again. I think it's a basic, Deb, I'm sorry, Ms. Clark, the, the, what's the purpose of the kindergarten screening?
When it's done late like that?
We, the kindergarten screening is part of Child Find. The school systems are responsible to screen our children. Years ago, we did it in the fall, and we moved to the spring. It, it can be done fall or spring, there's no mandate of when it needs to be done. I think when we did it in the fall, it was, teachers didn't like to be out of their classrooms at the beginning to do it, that's why we moved it to the spring. But you can do it either in the fall or in the spring.
So when COVID's no longer an issue, we go back to the spring?
I, I mean, that would be up to elementary and everything, but that would be, I think that's the best, because you get a picture of the kids who are coming in, you have more time to use, look at that data, analyze it, and see where we are on that. I think that would be ideal, so hopefully we do get back to that.
We, we just don't, we just don't want more people in the buildings in the spring this year, and.
Deb, there are different screeners for four-year-olds and five-year-olds, isn't that correct? There's a different screener for spring than there is for fall?
We use the Brigance screener, so if we were screening in the spring, we have two different booklets that we would use, and the, each elementary would have the different ones. If we're doing it in the fall, almost all of our children, or all of them, will be five by the time we're screening because of the kindergarten age, so we would just use the five-year-old kits for that. So it's just, it's a combination of having enough kits and all of that as well.
Thank you.
Anything further on that? See nothing? We'll move on to the fiscal twenty-two draft budget. Now, if I understand, we're going to talk about wrapping up the budget presentation, and then after we're done, we're going to do the annual public hearing. Is that the plan?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All righty, Nicole or Dr. Conti, whoever's.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for operating budget, we have just three, three budgets left. Line 41, curriculum. Line 56, health services. And line 64, sped operating. For curriculum, there's only a $30 increase, which was just due to a subscription increase renewal for next year. For health services, it appears that there's a $13,660 increase, but this is actually just reinstating what was cut from the budget this year at September town meeting, which was costs associated with the vision and hearing screenings that were waived for this year. So adding that, that 13 grand back is level funding them. And then sped operating, which was a 0% increase.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those three items of the budget?
No.
Patrick?
Sorry, I know, I think Barbara Conley's on the call. And I know she just wanted, she doesn't have a presentation, but she just wanted to make a brief comment about the health budget, if that's okay, through the chair.
It's Conley.
I don't have any comments about the budget itself, but, because I don't see any increase, major increases for next year unless we need PPE that's not covered by grants. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank the school committee for everything that they've done to support the school district in opening the district. I want to thank the Board of Health, Susan Luminal and Christine Pollak, for all their support in helping with contact tracing and supporting our protocol development this year. I would like to thank all the school nurses for their outstanding efforts this year, working 24/7, meeting the needs of the whole community. And lastly, I would like to thank my co-pilot, Patrick Larkin. I honestly don't know what I would do without him this year. He has been my sounding board and my support. So I just wanted to acknowledge everybody's support.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Chair, we also have Mary Hood here for the, we haven't done accommodated yet, but for the sped operating, Mary, are you with us?
I am here.
Hi, Mary.
Mary.
Aye.
So I want to make sure, before you start, Mary, that I, for the committee and-
We thank Mary for her service in Burlington. Sadly, Mary is retiring. She's leaving us this June. So I just can't thank her enough for, for all of her work over the last several years. I'm so happy that our career paths crossed. And I had the opportunity to learn from Mary and to, and to work with her. And so it's been thoroughly enjoyable. And I think, that's the saying, is just try to leave places better than you found them. And I think Mary has, has done that in Burlington. So again, Mary, with that, if you want to make a operating budget comment.
Well, I will thank you for our comments. And I will thank the school committee for always supporting the special education budget and the programs that we have in the district. I felt very supported for the past three years in managing the budget. And Nicole has been absolutely wonderful, teaching me things that I didn't know about the budget and helping me get through that. So thank you, Nicole. We, it, we didn't ask for any increases this year. And we've done well in COVID to stay within the budget limits and still provide services to our special education students and have them in, in school consistently all year. And I thank you all for that.
Mary, the one position, if you had to prioritize, I know, was that a school psychologist at Marshall Simons Middle School? Is that from the middle school presentation? I just want to keep that in front and center of the school committee's mind. And that would also provide you some team chair support at the middle school as well, is that correct?
Yes, and programming support at the middle school. So that, that would be my priority. And the other piece that was requested, I believe, is another special education teacher at Pine Land. And if there was an opportunity to open for that to happen, that would be important as well.
So again, we may have some federal money to consider this. And I just wanted to make sure that you heard from Mary, her priorities. So again, I think that school psychologist, the middle school, is going to be important for us. And then we'll try to figure out some scheduling at Pine Land.
Great, thank you.
Chris?
Mary, don't go away yet. We really don't want you to leave.
Thank you.
The CPAC parents don't want you to leave. I don't want you to leave. The rest of the board doesn't want you to leave. So we're feeling a little blue about you leaving. But we wish you the best.
Thank you, Chris. And thanks for all the support the past three years. It's been great. And, and really, you guys are a wonderful school committee for supporting our special education students.
I also want to thank you, Mary, for all that you've given to the district in the years you were here. And I am very sad that you're leaving, but I really wish you a good next, next stage of your life. So I don't know if you can see the smile, but under the mask, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks very much, Mary. Nicole, budget wrap-up?
Yeah, so for the operating budget, if you look on the bottom of page four, we were aiming to a, a 3.5% guideline. So the, the current budget shows $3,769 increase over that 3.5%. So in order to come in at the 3.5, we could make those cuts in the guidance budget as they were one of the only departments to have an increase of that size that would be able to cut from.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah, so let me, let me, and I think we have Roger on the call as well. So the guideline was 3.5%. Ms. Simon, we're coming in at 3.51. The difference is the $3,700. So we can certainly make that reduction in one of the lines. I, for one, don't mind coming in at 3.51, but I'm not sure the optics of that. But I think we've done very well to come in where we're, where we're, where we're coming in. And we have two outstanding contracts that we're trying to settle. So whether it's 3.51 or some other number, I think that it's really not going to be firmed up until we have that, have that information. So again, Roger, it's, it's your call. Do you want us to present at 3.5 or 3.51?
I agree that it sort of hardly seems percentage-wise as much to quibble over, but I think it looks better if it's a nice round 3.5 as requested.
So again, what I would tell the committee is that number is as real as it's going to be until we settle, until we settle the contract. So, so again, we can make it 3.5, as Nicole said, and come in at a, at a clean 3 point, at a 3.5, which would be, again, a $3,700 and 69, $3,769 reduction. And is it the high school guidance budget?
Yes, line 51.
So line 51, so that's where we would make the-
Is the, are the numbers in the agenda, Nicole, with that $3,700 in it? Or would that $3,700 taken out of it?
Taken out.
Taken out.
So that number we're looking at is, would be exactly 3.5?
Correct.
Do we do, do we open a budget hearing and close it?
Yeah, first, well, okay, so is that the end of the, the budget wrap-up?
For operating, we, we still have accommodated.
Okay. But the, okay, yeah, so I want you to do the accommodated.
Okay. So for accommodated, which is, was sent out as a separate document and also on our, our website, we actually have a reduction in accommodated this year of $281,683. We had a number of students that either aged out or moved out. And this reflects the reduction of those tuition costs.
Again, Mr. Chair, excuse me, we have our preschool program, Burlington Early Education, the, our early childhood center is, is in the accommodated account. I know we have, we've already talked to Ms. Clark, but I want to give her a chance to, to comment. And then if Mary wants to make any comments on the accommodated account, we'd love to hear from Mary again, one more time. So Deb, are you there?
Yes. So we didn't make any, for our budget this year, we didn't make any changes or increases for that. For our staffing, at the beginning of the year, we kind of kept some staffing at bay because our numbers were a little bit low to start off with. So I think we saved some money for the budget for that going into this time. We are picking up with our referrals. So staff, we have hired some new staff recently to cover those new students. Tuition this year, I worked with Nicole on that and Dr. Conti. Because we have our hybrid model, we reduced tuition this year, and we didn't have an afternoon program. So some of our tuition funds are low, are obviously lower this year. But we will be going back to our standard tuition with a slight increase from previous years next year. And we will be having our afternoon sessions as well. So the tuition that we'll be bringing in will be increased from what it was this year.
Deb, in the conversation, you mentioned there were some challenges with EI, early intervention during COVID. And you may have more students next year, or there may be a backlog? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, so it's not just a Burlington issue. It is an issue with all, the preschools in, in the state, in the area that I'm in a group with. Early intervention is working remotely. I believe they've worked remotely since the shutdown, and they will continue to work remotely until the summer. So we're getting more and more students who haven't, you know, gone to the EI play groups or some of the music groups or community groups or had interactions with students. So we are getting some students who haven't had that, those home visits, that one-on-one work with therapists. So we are finding some students who are in need of more services than we usually. Our, our numbers are a little higher with some of our more, more involved students. So we are getting those numbers in.
And please, I don't- But EI, early intervention, do you need a-
Early intervention serves birth to three years old. When students are about two and a half, we get a referral from early intervention for students to be evaluated to see if they qualify for special education services by having a disability in one of the areas of what Massachusetts states. It could be communication, it could be autism, it could be a developmental delay. So we evaluate them to see if they are eligible for special education. If they are eligible, they're put on an IEP, and they're provided services. So just under half of our students are students who have some special education need. And then just over 50% of our students are students who are our neighborhood students, who are generalist students, and those are the students who pay tuition.
Good?
We're good.
And, you know, I want to thank the school committee, administration for all their support. Custodial has been wonderful for us. And, you know, our families have been fantastic, you know, working with us, you know, following guidelines. You know, getting three-year-olds and four-year-olds to wear masks is not an easy feat, but we've had great, great compliance and work with families. And our staff has really worked well on that, and it's been a two-team effort. So on behalf of the preschool staff, we want to thank all of you for your support.
And Mary, any comments on the accommodated?
I guess without being negative, I just want to warn you that the out-of-district tuitions tend to be a moving target. And so while I'm absolutely thrilled to see that they're down this year, there is an ebb and flow that occurs when you have a cluster of students who, you know, reach the age where they're no longer eligible for services. We also have years where we have a number become eligible. So that number, I just want to be tiny bit, personally, warn people that it will fluctuate.
Which is why it's in the accommodated account, which you all know. So again, Mary, thank you again. We will, the next time will be a roast, so we're, we're going to be roasting you next. So, but thank you for making time tonight.
Thank you. Nicole, you said the accommodated went down. What was, what was the accommodated guideline this year? Was it?
I'm, I'm not, I'm actually not sure on that.
We didn't, we didn't really get an accommodated guideline this year.
Many years pass, it's generally been larger than the operating budget guideline.
Usually about 5%, I think.
Right. It, but, and then, and it's gone down by how much, the budget?
$281,683, a 2.2%.
You know, not to nitpick over the $3,700, but if you combine that total guidelines, we're still coming in under.
Again, I understand, and it's a budget number. And, and again, with unsettled contracts, we still, the, the number, not as it certainly has meaning, but I think it's, it's still in flux. I think another important question, and again, to Nicole's credit, is she's been managing Circuit Breaker very well. So the, the accommodated account at the 2.2% is where Circuit Breaker budgeted at-
65%.
At 65%. So she's been able to budget in some of that conservative nature of that. So if we get more than 65% on Circuit Breaker, then that percentage would go down even further. And then also remember that with the Student Opportunity Act, the state is committed to, on a gradually increasing basis, to fund, provide funding, or allow Circuit Breaker to be used for out-of-district transportation. So that's, that's a new reimbursement that we can seek. And if, if funded, I always have to say, if funded from the state, they're going to start at 25%, then go to 50%. And then, so in the next, say, two to three years, we would be able to get Circuit Breaker reimbursement for our out-of-district transportation, again, which will also help the accommodated account expenditures.
All right, if there's nothing further on the budget wrap-up, the chair will entertain a motion to, just as background, state law requires us to have a public hearing on our budget every year prior to town meeting. So tonight, the public hearing is on our agenda. So the chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year '22.
Salute.
Moved and?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. 5:00 in the public hearing on the fiscal '22 school budget is now open. If anybody from the school committee wants to comment or ask questions, I'll let the committee speak first. And then if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak, I'll recognize them afterwards. Christine?
No, I got nothing. I'm good.
Martha?
Yeah, I, I've asked my specific questions, but I'd like to thank Dr. Conti and Ms. Kasha for the hard work. This is a difficult year financially. There've been all these additional considerations regarding the, the federal money, the ESA and the rescue and making, you've, you've done a really excellent job incorporating that into the budget and into the budget planning, and I want to thank you. And I am sorry that we have to have a 3.5 budget guideline, but I understand, you know, that everybody is short, short, you know, and the town is short. So I, I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that went into this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Carl, you're good. Catherine, anything? Okay, Bob, anybody in the audience appear or raising their hand to be heard in the public hearing?
Yes, Beth Colburn has her hand raised.
Okay.
Beth, if you're on, would you like to address the school committee and state your name?
Yes, please. My name is Beth Colburn. I'm a board member of the CPAC, and I'm also a parent of three children in the district. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for all their efforts with the budget. It's a horrible job, and I don't want it. I'm so glad you're doing it, not me. But I just wanted to also, and, and as a numbers person myself, financial is super important, looking at the numbers, balancing your budget. But as a parent, I just wanted to also give you- But as a parent, I just wanted to also give you that one last reminder that this money is being spent on tiny humans, developing adults, future leaders. Um, and so these are certainly difficult decisions, but remember that this money is going to something super important, one of the most important things, um, in our community. Um, and to keep that in mind when you're making some of these difficult decisions. Oh, and also, um, I'm also incredibly devastated that Mary Hood is leaving. Um, I'm barely able to cope. Um, and, um, I agree with everything everyone else has said. We will truly miss her.
Thank you, Beth. Bob, anybody else out there indicating?
Nope, no one else has their hand raised.
Okay. Uh, if there's nobody else with any comments, uh, chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passed at 5-0 and the public hearing is now closed. Now we have to move on to vote our budget, which will be presented to town meeting. Uh, this requires three separate motions, one for the salary account, one for the non-salary account, and then one for the total operating budget. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion, uh, for the fiscal '22 school budget salary account.
I move that we approve the fiscal '22 school budget salary account at the amount of $49,629,632.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the salary account budget as proposed? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chair abstains. It's a 4-1-0 vote. Uh, now move on to, uh, a, a motion for the non-salary account.
I move that the committee approve the non-salary account for the FY '22 school budget in the amount of $7,507,479.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Um, and that's a 5-0 unanimous vote on the non-salary account. And we'll now entertain a motion for the total operating budget.
I move that the school committee approve the FY '22 school budget, total operating budget in the amount of $57,137,111.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, no discussion. Uh, chair will put the motion to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that also is 5-0-0. So that adopts the fiscal '22 school operating budget. Uh, next move on to the special education accommodated, uh, account budget. Is there a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the special education accommodated account budget in the amount of $12,333,456.
Second that.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 5-0-0 and that's approved. Um, we're on the Ways and Means Agenda for tomorrow night, right, Roger? Seven o'clock?
Yes. Seven o'clock.
So anybody who wants to join that call, uh, we posted it for the school committee.
Do we have a link, Roger?
I think there's one out there.
Chair, we can, we'll distribute the link.
And, um, moving forward, uh, we want to thank the committee. Uh, basically that vote marks this becoming, uh, transferring from a district budget to a school committee budget. So moving forward, this is the, this is the school committee's budget and we represent it as such. So, uh, thank you, uh, for getting that done. Mr. Chair, um, we just got some information, I think it was, uh, today, that I just wanted to, um, uh, pass along to the, uh, to, to the committee is something we're watching closely. I think Patrick can, um, help me as well. So if you look again, and if you could pass the packet along, I think I have enough for everybody. Oops, we don't have enough for anyone. I can, um...
Yeah, we're good.
Bob, can you just run one over? That'd be great. Sorry, I counted wrong. Mr. Foss, I would fail my handing out papers. That's right. So I'll go from there. Um, enrollment is a really important part of budgeting, as you all know. Program and enrollment drive staffing. Class sizes are a critical part of budgeting. This year has been, uh, a challenge for us just because of the amount of, of fluctuations that we've had. So I just wanted to give you sort of an early warning sign, maybe. Um, if the front page that you're looking at, if you top left, it says projected enrollment May of 2020. So this was May of last year. And if you look at your kindergarten, uh, Fox Hill at 74, Memorial 52, Pine Glen 35, Francis Wyman 80. Does everyone see the page I'm looking at? Typically, when we would build a budget, then we would look at last year. We do, we move all the cohorts up. So K would become one, one would become two. Um, we would factor in some, some mobility, but I think it gives us a, generally a decent idea as what our class sizes are going to be and then what our programs are going to be. If you look at, uh, the information that we got, I think it was yesterday, Patrick, um, from Robin, um, and you look at, uh, April of 2021, so this month, um, you can see that, um, and you can separate the sheets if you need to, but, um, our K numbers are up at, um, at Fox Hill, um, they're up at Memorial, they're up at Pine Glen. And, um, Francis Wyman is always an outlier. They have, uh, lots of late regist, registrations. So, um, um, again, the Francis Wyman number is, is always the least, the least accurate for us in the spring. Um, we get, again, a lot of families come in, um, during, during the summer for Francis Wyman. So, um, you can already see that, um, um, we have some potential class size challenges. I just wanted to highlight, some parents needed the, uh, full-day experiences during COVID. So we had, um, we, that we're aware of, we have about 28, um, students in private, in private K. And we have about 33 students in, uh, being homeschooled, uh, grades K to four, which is about three times our normal, um, number of homeschool students. We're reaching out to those families. We're seeing which families may want to repeat K in the public school setting, which families want to return their children if we go back to full-time education in the fall. Um, but it's quite possible that at a school like Fox Hill, we could end up with, um, more than 20 kindergarten students, um, per class. And I know this committee gets, um, upset. Um, Mrs. Monaco, um, I'm channeling your anger already.
It's distress, not anger.
Stress, not anger. So, um, uh, where the, so staffing is a limiting factor in, in these, in this sort of challenge, but space is also a factor in this challenge. So we're, we're running out of classrooms. And so, um, like, again, Patrick and I are looking at, uh, classroom numbers, whether specialists need to stay on a cart. Um, so we, we are starting to see an enrollment, um, some enrollment growth at the, at the early elementary. And again, this year in particular has been, um, a real challenge for us to, um, to predict. So I think we'll, we'll continue to watch it and, um, we'll give regular, regular updates. Typically, I'm not sure typically is the right word, traditionally, maybe even not sure that's the right word. Um, in prior budget years, Mr. Chair, um, we've always been able to add positions outside of the guideline if they're enrollment-driven. Um, depending on the situation that we find ourselves in, um, depending on the federal relief that we get, it may be that if we can find space, we may come back to the committee to ask for, um, some additional staffing, for some class size, uh, relief. Um, I am, we have redistricted in the past. But as you can see, there's not a school that necessarily is, um, far below where they were. So, um, if we have roughly 16 kindergarten classrooms across the district, I can't necessarily take kids from one part of town and move them in, into, uh, another. We've done that in the past, but it doesn't make sense to redistrict frequently because it just, um, it causes more disruption than it's worth. So, um, we're not in DEFCON 5 or the, the sirens aren't going off yet, but I do think, um, it's something that we need to watch closely and, um, we'll need to probably keep track of it all throughout the, the summertime is, is what I think we're going to have to watch. And, uh, I know that I have, again, my conversations with parents, elementary class size is, is a priority for them. And I know that they have some, uh, they have some concerns. So...
All right, keep an eye on it, I guess. Um, anything else to come before the board this evening? Old business, questions? Um, I just, I don't want to take all the credit, but I just can't help notice that I've been the chair for two hours. We've built a new school, hired a diversity instructor. We passed a $57 million budget. What'd you do today, Dr. Conti?
I'm not sure. You've had an incredibly productive first meeting, Mr. Chair.
Um, if there's nothing further, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Again, thank you.